In order, Mr. Weaverhead is hand up, then Mr. McClung.
You really can't send it back to planning, even if you fill out planning at this point, because it's here. It's to be decided here.
It has to be within 15 days of the motion?
Yes. The next problem you have slightly that needs to be addressed is she's operating on a weekly rental basis. Our code allows arguably to rent seven-day periods to residents, to people who are supposed to be coming to our town, not necessarily as a tourist function. And there's some question right now about how we may or may not enforce that in the future against advertising in a tourist form to bring in rental. So she's trying to clean up ostensibly something that her attorney and I have debated about whether it's legal to operate completely or not.
Okay. In my advertising, I advertise by the week. There are weekly rates posted. I have a rental contract assigned with every person that stays there.
Mr. McClung.
Three of the commissioners were in favor.
Yes.
And as I see it, it's really a question of the commission being hamstrung because of the shortage of commissioners. And for me personally, I have to look at it that way in that, you know, maybe the needs, there is a need for the rules to be changed because of the shortage that, you know, it doesn't have to be the majority of commissioners in total. So, you know, I'm leaning in that direction that, to approve her request and, but also at the same time, make no mistake, it's not out of any fear that there's going to be any repercussions or that we're opening ourselves up to any kind of lawsuit or anything like that. This council will not operate under that fear ever.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mr.
Based on...
No, I really didn't. I just wanted to clear my throat. Based on the letter of the code that is here, as I think Ms. Zeller and Mickey both mentioned, the, Ms. Green has met all the requirements for a CUP. I also understand the commissioner over there and the concern that that is quite probable that the commission being low on number was a factor in this. Also, for the attorney, is R1, the Victorian, has a moratorium on tourist lodging? They, at some point, somehow, the citizens or somebody came into residential one and asked for a moratorium specific to tourist lodging? Is that, is that out there?
Actually, it's not a moratorium. There's an actual law on our books that R1 cannot have tourist lodging.
So at some point, somebody modified that for R1?
Yes.
Okay. So there is an option for residents of an area to, like in R2, to eventually go to planning or something? There is an avenue for them to go to, which happened like similar in R1. If they wanted no tourist lodging or anything on this list of potential conditional use, they could at least petition and try and start that process?
Yes, they could try to modify the list of conditional uses.
Okay. So there is an, something out there for future, okay?
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? If not, yes, sir.
I move that we grant a conditional use permit for 10 Alamo.
I'll second.
Motion been made to approve the CUP for 10 Alamo, and it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Do we need to re-call this?
Oh, we should.
Yeah, let's re-call.
I prefer that. Attorney McClung.
Hi.
Dean Perkypile.
Yes.
Joyce Zeller.
Yes.
Mickey Schneider.
Yes.
David Mitchell.
Yes.
Five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Now that brings us into unfinished business. Number one, these will be carryovers from the last council and council meeting. Number one is stated as the nominees for the Carroll County Solid Waste Advisory Committee. That was a recommendation by the last council that we have won, so that moves to you. Motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Floor is open. Yes, sir.
Did you give us a reminder why we're doing this?
Yep. Like I said, it was a carryover from the last council that it be reverted over to this council since they ran out of time to deal with it.
Explain what it is.
And the reason we need advisory?
They stated that in the contract or the city code that it calls that the, there be an advisory committee formed in, per the contract. Now that, there were some other issues with the solid waste, such as yellow bags and a few other things that was dealt with by the last council or committee. Yes, sir.
Is there anything that this committee would do that would be different than if Public Works or somebody else had it as an agenda item and was handling and discussing it some, something already?
To be honest with you, I never, I didn't check on it because I knew it was coming to you guys, and I figured if you wanted to, since it was an agenda item, you could either table it and research it, deal with it next time, or deal with it this time. It's not.
Wasn't this advisory committee one of those issues that depending on which way you looked at it, it either said we would have a committee, we needed a committee, or the other, if you looked at it from the other side, it said you didn't really?
It never was addressed. It wasn't addressed as far as that.
Okay. So I'll ask the attorney, do we need a committee? We've never had one of these, right?
That question that you're presenting has never been presented directly to me, so I've never looked at it.
Expect a lot of correctness.
It does, it does appear in our contract, the terms for one, but whether it requires us to have one, I don't, I can't answer that tonight.
Okay. But you could at the next meeting?
I could look at it.
We should table.
Well, this waste advisory committee, what would they do? Are they just going to sit there and advise whatever board runs Carroll County Solid Waste on what to do? This sounds like one of these things where you go to the meeting and nothing happens and they waste the time. I mean...
Usually, our contract is with Carroll County Solid Waste, and it, my understanding is that if anyone has a question, it's usually them, since we contract with them.
Oh, well, I, I don't know. If it's, if it's in order, I would like to make a motion that we table this matter in perpetuity.
Indifferently?
I'll second if you make it until the next meeting so we can get the attorney's explanation.
Oh, okay. Mr. Attorney?
To answer your question about what it does, it's, my understanding is it's supposed to arbitrate if there's a problem. There's an actual group of, which I believe the mayor is a member, and several other people are members, that run the solid waste itself.
Carroll County Solid Waste Board.
They have a board. This would be like someone where you could go complain if you're a citizen and you didn't like what was going on somehow.
I don't see the need for this, sorry. Okay, I withdraw my motion if it's out of order.
Mr. Mitchell.
I'm confused.
I make a motion that we take no action on this advisory committee.
Okay. Is there a second? We have a motion to table.
Can I ask him first before we...
I'll second it.
Do we need to have, by law, do we need this? Or is that what you were going to research?
I would have to look at it to be absolutely sure, but I don't think it's required.
Okay. So if you would like to state it's not required unless you come back next week and tell us otherwise? Will that work?
I can do that for you.
Okay. We need to amend the motion then.
Yeah, because we change motions here.
May I amend that emotion then?
Yes, you may.
I make a motion that we table the solid waste advisory committee agenda topic until the next meeting when the city attorney has time to advise us on its necessity.
I'll second that.
Maiden second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Takes us to number two, which is discussion of Code Section 4.48, which would be, I think, it actually called for an ordinance on city permitted or city sanctioned, amending that section to city permitted or city sanctioned. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Maiden seconded. Floor is open.
What's this in reference to?
It's Code Section...
Finding the difference?
Yeah, I think Mr. Weaver had been requested to check on the ordinance for this issue, trying to change city code, amending it to either city permitted or city sanctioned. So, Miss Schneider.
Okay. I said on Planning Commission where all this came up ages ago. What this is, in order for events in town to be able to legally perform sales like of t-shirts, doodads, whatnots, like whenever we have our stuff where they rent the whole lot, you know, the parking lot and sell stuff, in order to be able to collect the taxes on that, the CAP taxes and stuff, it has to say city sanctioned or city permitted, because the city doesn't recognize as in sponsoring. I think now it says city sponsored. The city doesn't sponsor a whole lot of these things that we have going on, particularly in regards to the auditorium. And if we can't change the wording on here, then we can't collect the sales tax and make our due money.
Does the city not provide a permit for these things?
Legally to collect tax on the sales items. It has to say city permitted or city sanctioned instead of city sponsored, because the things that are not sponsored, which is the vast majority, are selling items because they've got the permit, but we aren't collecting tax on it. Basically, is what it comes down to.
Mr. Porteau.
Follow Mr. McClung's question, is there a permit involved?
They get a permit, and they can sell stuff, but we can't collect tax on it.
So city permitted would be the more appropriate term rather than city sanctioned. You're not blessing it.
Right.
You know, by the city auspices.
Which is why we did prefer permitted, but there was talk back and forth about whichever. They both work, but permitted is clearer in my book.
Yes, sir.
Do we have an ordinance drafted for this?
You do not have an ordinance. I left it for you to, I really think you need a full explanation, and maybe you're satisfied with what Mickey can bring you tonight, but I thought you needed an explanation before you dove into something and took a vote on something, and it either failed without knowledge or...
Have you got a better one?
No, I think it needs to be changed. I think, but I left it so that you could hear from the planning, actually, I hoped the chairman would be able to be here tonight and speak to it, because this is something she, I think, has pushed from the very beginning.
Mr. Porteau.
So how do we get this further, fully vetted explanation?
I would suggest that if you are satisfied, you tell me to go ahead and write the ordinance and start spending city money that way. If not, that you continue it to next time and have the chairman of the Planning Commission, assuming she can be here to explain it to you fully, if you have any questions about it, before we spend money writing her an ordinance. Unfortunately, at the end of last term, we wrote some ordinances that apparently went nowhere and spent good herd, earned dollars of our taxpayers doing that. And I, this would be one left that I didn't spend money on for you, until I heard a little bit further from you.
Schneider.
Tim, did we need to write a whole new, I don't remember, do we need to write a whole new ordinance or just change the one word in the code, which is 4.40?
It will take a very short ordinance to change the code.
Okay, so it's not a matter of changing one word or adding a paragraph?
It's not a big... No. It's not, and not a very complicated matter, but we'll take an ordinance to change it.
Okay. Thank you.
My question to you, Tim, is if she comes back at the next meeting to explain this, will you have talked with her ahead of time so the two of you are on the same page?
I think...
So we know exactly where we're going to be, and we don't have to do it another time after that?
We could have the ordinance ready if you want us to do that, and she could be here to further explain it.
Is it something that you see that there's a need for? You apparently have looked at it.
I, I think it's, would be very helpful, because the way it's written right now, it does restrict what can be done and how it's done.
As far as, as the city collecting tax?
As far as the city being involved in certain events, yes.
No, that's not what I said.
Is it preventing us from collecting a tax? I don't know that it actually does that, but it prevents us from being able to allow certain activities to take place that would generate tax.
I may have worded it poorly.
Well, then I think that I really need to hear a definition of what it is, and I'm hoping that when Beverly brings that, that you have already gotten with her, and that it's, at least you two are together on it, so we know that, you know, that there's some consistency to it.
The way I view it, and Beverly, Ms. Blankenship needs to address the way she does see it, but the way I see it, right now, there are certain events that are allowed to do certain things, sell sponsorships, get events, sell certain items or give away certain items that generate income to the city through a tax. But because we have the word city sponsored in there instead of city permitted, those number of events are limited.
In my respect, I'm not getting...
The Eureka was a city-sponsored event, but I understand next year it will not be a city-sponsored event anymore. So certain things it did this year, it would be prohibited.
Eureka next year?
Habit it from next year.
But is it a city-sponsored next year or private event?
For 2013, I believe they have funding from the CIPC after that. This is the last year.
Okay, all right. This would be the last year, so then after that. And there's other events that have went on over the years that have lost their city-sponsored as they mature.
Well, that's a good thing. We like them to be able to...
Yeah, but when they mature, they lose certain benefits that they have right now as city-sponsored events to do certain things that generate tax.
Okay.
So when they lose the ability to do certain things, even though they have matured out of our umbrella of us protecting them, we lose potentially revenue to be coming in.
Until fairly recently, these permits were handed through the clerk's office, and it is true that if, changing it to city permitted is one step in the direction of then taking the next step to permit vendors at events. So this is really step one. Right now, there is not a mechanism in place for individuals who want to sell objects during events to get a permit to vend and thereby remit taxes. So this is really just step number one.
If you have a city-sponsored event, you can sell, you can vend. If you lose that city-sponsored portion, there's really not a provision in the code for you to be able to sell trinkets and other items at your events and generate a tax.
Miss Schneider had her hand up next.
If you want to discuss, then... Just one question. So the bottom line in this is more money for the city?
It should be, yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we ask the city attorney to do the proper ordinance for our next meeting, and that we ask the planning chair, Blankenship, to come and have a thorough discussion before we take a vote.
Okay. What do you want the ordinance to say?
Changing it to permitted, city permitted.
Could we divide that, please? That's two different things.
Okay. I make a motion to ask the city attorney to provide us with a new ordinance in regards to this, amending the wordage to city permitted.
Okay. Any further discussion, or?
And then I'm asking you to ask Beverly to come.
Okay.
It's not amended.
Yeah, 4.48.
Yes, sir. I'm trying to find it here. It tells here. Is there something you want to...
Well, I just, no, I guess, I guess...
Well, this gives us two weeks to research.
Yeah, that's, that's all right.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. All right.
Second motion.
Second motion was to... Mickey, you had a second motion?
Pardon me? Oh, no, I just wanted to make sure that we ask Beverly Blankenship to come.
You need to add in the motion, just a quick question.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, that wasn't part of it.
Brings us to number three, ordinance 2171, which the last council passed to this council to set the number of subordinate police officers.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open. Mickey, Miss Schneider's on.
I think we need to put down 1,000 officers so we can cover our backs whenever we have special events. Neener neener.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Where are we on this? Has this been read, or is this in a second or third reading, or what?
It's nowhere.
It's, do you remember the actual status of it from, from the minutes?
My thought was it was...
Okay, yes, ma'am, go ahead. Go ahead.
It did not pass on its first reading, because when it came time to start plugging in numbers, that's where it all broke down. So it technically has been read once, but the blanks have never been filled in, and so then it has not passed even once.
Oh, so it's, it's like it's not been read? Because it hasn't been, okay.
In a manner, yes. It is like it's not.
So, okay. So conceivably, you can't suspend the rules on the first reading of an ordinance and just read it by title only, can you? And what I, what I'm getting at is here that, this is another one of these things that seems to me to have wasted two years of our council's time, in the last two years. I don't see that it's necessary, and if we just introduce this to the table and it doesn't get a set, and doesn't just simply die, and it doesn't come up again. Okay, so is that...
If we brought back to anybody who didn't know, I think, under a new...
What I want to do is get rid of this and just not even have to waste time talking about it.
We need to deal.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell, you had your hand up next.
Actually, Joyce said it much better than I probably was going to say it, because the bottom line is, when you do the budget and you have salaries, productive salaries, you in essence created your position control. You control the number of FTEs, which is a full-time equivalent, and that, that controls the number of employees in that area, so this, this ordinance is, is a waste of time.
Okay. Miss Schneider.
Okay. If I remember all of the discussions properly, even though it's been said many times that the officers are numbered, so to speak, by the budgetary process, because when the police chief puts in for X amount of dollars in salary, this breaks down into how many officers he can have. It was then pointed out that, well, since we don't always approve the budget by ordinance, sometimes we do it by resolution, therefore, this was not, the number of officers was not being decided by ordinance as the law states. Am I kind of in the right area there? Okay. So, we have under new business, setting up procedures and stuff, at which time I'm going to ask a discussion for if we need to be doing all budgets by ordinance as opposed to resolution, but I don't think anybody sitting at this table, with the exception of the mayor, has any right determining what number of officers are needed by our police department, because we don't know squat. The police chief does, the mayor does, because he was one for eons. We don't know anything. And I come from a cop family, and I would never step in there and try to tell the police chief, you can or cannot have. I've lived here way too long to know when the big periods are needed, when the weather periods are needed, and all this kind of thing. We don't have the right to determine how many cops. That's why I said we need to put in a total of 1,000 officers. That doesn't mean he has to hire 1,000. That means if we need them, they're there. If he needs one more than what he's got, he can. If he needs two more than what he's got, he can. And yeah, seriously, down the road, somebody's going to say, you need to hire 1,000. I don't think so. Anyway, we don't have the right to make that decision, so we have to decide how to accept this to make it legal.
Mr. Porteau.
Mr. Mayor, didn't Chief Police provide information regarding this?
Yes.
And justify the number of positions that he has currently? Is there, the question in my mind, is there any need for this ordinance? And can we do away with the ordinance if there's no need for it? What is the driving force behind this ordinance? And the second thing is, what does the ordinance say? We don't, we don't have, we don't have a copy of it here.
Yeah. We got it in our mail today.
In our mail today.
It's here. I didn't say anything.
So I, I'm just saying that it doesn't appear that there's a need for this, and this was driven by other forces prior to this council, and I think we ought to dismiss it.
Wasn't there a reading of the law that said it had to be, because it has to be done by ordinance, we either do the budget by ordinance, or we do the officers by ordinance?
You could, you can read the law to say that. The attorney general's opinion on it, though, I think pretty well allows what we're doing right now.
Okay. Regardless of how we decide the budget, ordinance, or resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
Ma'am.
I just want to say when the police chief turns in his budget, he has every position listed. There may not, if he doesn't have that position clear at that moment, he has it in the budget sides, and it comes down to a total. It's not just, you know, this much money for so many options. Every option, every position is listed, what that position pays, what the test wage overtime is, and, you know, it's...
For the purpose of the videotape, sitting at the table is Lonnie Clark. He's our financial director for the city. If he joined us here at the table, just know the chairman, it's time for him to say.
So it's nice to have you right here, or we can talk to you.
David.
Again, just for clarification off of what this, our esteemed director of finance said, when you establish a budget, you do usually have a position control, and you have the number of different employees in there. But the reason you usually look at in a budget, the total of salary dollars, and you do actual salary and non-productive, is because a lot of times, if, if, everybody may not be a full-time employee, you could have double part-time employees that were half-time, or you could have a whole bunch of PRN employees, as long as you don't go over in salary dollars. So the number of people could be fluctuating, but the salary dollars control it. And again, it could be all full-time, it could be all part-time, or it could be all PRN as needed, and that would change the numbers. But the salary dollars really, truthfully, does set the position control.
Mr. Porteau.
The way this is reading, it establishes no more than one chief and blank number of subordinate officers for a total of blank officers. I think that limits the ability of the police department to add personnel as they need them as the city grows, which we hope it does. So I, I think this is a needless, and ordinance, I think we should, however we dismiss it, I think it should be dismissed.
I agree with you.
Would entertain a motion.
A motion to do what?
To end it?
You have to act on this since it's an agenda.
I, I move to dismiss this ordinance.
I'll second.
Maiden seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It's off the agenda.
You're sure, Tim? I'd like to make a motion to take a break.
For how long?
Two days.
Oh, 10 minutes.
It would be part of your motion.
Let's see, every time we say five minutes, it's always 10 minutes, so...
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
I almost wanted to say...
Okay. We are just entering new business. If I can make a request, if y'all would look at the items under new business... If I can make a request, if y'all would look at the items under new business, we have a budget resolution in the budget, which may be lengthy. There's some other procedural issues below that, that you might want to take care of first, which shouldn't take any time at all. Whatever council wants to do, I'm just asking, just saying that we may need some time.
What you said.
Second.
Whatever, whatever order you wanted, and that's my motion.
We all...
It's your, it's your call. Do what? Why what?
It's fine.
Why what?
It's, it all has to be dealt with.
Whatever y'all want to do, I'm, I'm just saying, we have to deal with the budget resolution first, then the budget, and then you have to do procedural stuff after that. It's up to y'all.
Mayor, I move to do the procedural stuff first, and we can hit the hard stuff at the last.
Okay. We move stuff around for other reasons, so it's up to y'all. Okay. But who wants to start with what?
Number three.
Y'all need to make a motion to...
Well, don't you know what we want to start with?
I make a motion, we did open discussion for item number three, to set the regular council meeting dates and times.
Second?
Second.
When do you want to have your meetings? Dates and times? Right now, they're the second and fourth Mondays of each month.
Perfect.
That sounds good.
Good with that?
Perfect.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
I move that we, um, discuss, or I move that we discuss adoption of rules procedure for 2013.
Second?
Second.
Floor is open. Yes.
Who was the second?
Who's second?
Oh, I did.
You did?
David.
Yes.
We're currently using Robert's Rules of Order.
Yes, sir.
We seem to, council seems to consistently in the past have done that. And selfishly, I bought a Robert's Rules of Order book for dummies, so I'd like to kind of stick with it.
Just, just for information, this, you will be getting a copy of this when you go to Municipal League, and this is their version, which is basically this version cut down. So you'll be getting a copy of this, but tonight, you can make up your mind that you need to figure out how we're going to proceed. There is, yes, work though.
She was first.
Mr. Schneider.
For years, I've been trying to shoot Robert. Can we have a much shorter Robert's Rules type thing? This council especially, since everybody gets to decide their own thing, this council especially, I don't think is going to need the strict mandates that Robert's Rules goes through, and I hate saying, "Mother, may I." So the, the shorter version, I think, would be awesome. I've looked at it, it's very good. It still keeps you organized and under control, but without a lot of the nitpicking.
What short version are you talking about?
Revised number 11.
This one?
The Municipal League thing.
Municipal League thing?
Yep, little booklet.
It's a little, that thingy.
Procedural rules for municipal officers, done in municipal, or the Arkansas Municipal League?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good version.
Okay, we have two opinions now. Mr. Perkoff.
What is the difference between the two? I mean, besides one being abbreviated, they're still based on Robert's Rules?
This one is less stringent.
Is less stringent?
Stringent, yes. This is a little more...
How so? How so?
Uh, this one's just basic procedures, just like we're doing now. You come in, you have your agenda, you have your approval of the minutes, approval of the agenda, you start into your business, you have committee meetings. It's all lined out in here, just like we're doing.
So it's what we're doing currently and have been doing?
This procedure-wise.
Yes.
As far as dealing with point of orders and different motions.
Calling the votes and...
That, that falls back in here, and it is a little more detailed. And as anybody that's watched council meetings in the past can, can see that it can run into a big mess. Yes, Mr. Mitch?
But they're both Robert's Rules of Order.
This is just alluded basically.
And one is abbreviated. So what you're saying, what you're asking us is to choose the version of Robert's Rules of Order or the book that we're going to follow? So we really have to make a distinction between Robert's Rules of Order abbreviated by Municipal League, or the official Robert's Rules of Order book? What if we accepted Robert's Rules of Order, and, and why doesn't that cover the abbreviated?
Let me be very clear that I did not ask you to change. I really informed you of the, of the choices you had.
But do we actually have to choose between those two, Robert's Rules of Order?
You can choose. You can choose, yes.
So if we chose the book, doesn't that cover, and we can just talk abbreviated? That doesn't work?
This one?
Can we have Robert, and Robert Junior?
You can do whatever you want to do. It's your meeting, you can adopt whatever procedural issues you want to do. I'm, I'm just giving you the difference that as I perceive them under the, you know, what, what we have and what you're going to get. Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve Robert, or that's already been made for Robert's Rules of Order or not. And second, isn't that correct?
That's not the second.
Not been seconded.
Well, I second it then.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion?
For which one?
Robert.
The head man.
Not Herman's. Not Harry's.
The, the shorter version, yes, ma'am.
So are you talking about the revised, you're talking about the revised...
This one's off the table.
Roberts.
Well, as, as I write now, it's kind of under...
Robert Junior.
In brief?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Motion made and seconded to adopt procedural Robert's Rules of Orders, newly revised in brief, as our procedural manual for the next two years. Any further discussion? If not...
Is that anything at all like the big fat version?
This hits the highlights.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
If no further discussion, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Brings us to number five. Elect Mayor Prokem.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Now, there's...
Wait a minute. We, besides the rules, aren't we supposed to discuss our other procedures?
You can.
Oh.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'd like to further discuss other procedures that the council does or does not do. In the last council, they had changed the agenda approval method to having no vote, just a second. I would rather go back to the way it's been before. Someone moves to put something on the agenda, person seconds, and you vote on it.
Okay.
That's what we've had before. I'd like to see it go back to that, so we don't have two of six people sitting there and saying, "Well, you know, trash bags are important."
As opposed to what? I mean, I don't...
Okay, the way they have been doing for the last couple of years, if I would say, "I want to talk about yellow bags," you would second. Nobody else wants to talk about, but it's on the agenda because you seconded. I'd like to see a motion made, a second, and then a vote on if that issue's going on the agenda. If it's worthwhile, it'll be voted on.
Your, your ordinance, though, allows two council members or the mayor to put something on the agenda.
Prior to the meeting.
Prior to the meeting.
I'm talking about when we sit down.
You need to clarify that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, so when we're, when we're going over the agenda, sitting at the meeting, we're going over changes to the agenda, it takes a motion, a second, and a vote to add something to the agenda.
Any further discussion? Mr. Perkoff?
Is that a motion?
Yes, that was a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Any further?
Aye.
I don't know, I don't know what this part comes under. I would like to discuss having monthly budget reports as opposed to quarterly.
It can be discussed.
Okay, so discuss people. I know before, when I was on, we had monthly budget reports, they were very handy. We always knew exactly where we were standing at any given time of the year. It just seems to me that that would be a whole lot easier than quarterly. So I would like to say, let's drop the quarterly finance report and just go with a monthly finance, budget, budget, finance, whatever.
Mr. Perkoff.
I'd like to ask our Finance Director, is that, is that a problem to provide on a monthly basis?
No, that's actually...
It's no burden, it's a...
That's actually what we have, have been doing, and I don't know that they were discussed here at the table, but they were placed in the council members' boxes.
And what would that, would it be a budget like this every month? I mean, it would look like that?
It is, as long as we...
Killing a lot of trees, man. Could we have a summary or something?
That's part of the discussion.
It is one, yes, ma'am.
The clerk is required by law to provide quarterly reports, so it would not eliminate quarterly reports.
Mr. Schneider.
Since we haven't had a quarterly report yet, because a box of stuff is not a quarterly report, and none of the towns around us in four counties do a quarterly report, we could have our city attorney check into the exact wordage and situation in that regard, or we could go back to a monthly report, and I understand you're looking into getting new software so we can eliminate, like, what, at least half of this stuff? So our, our monthly report actually would be a whole lot less, because we've got stuff that we can't delete without a new program.
Mr. Perkoff.
So could the quarterly report, which apparently we have to have by law, could it fall on one of those months? You know? Yeah, for, in, you know, four months a year, we have the quarterly report, so...
A box of paperwork is not a quarterly report. We've had for two years.
Understood, but a, a quarterly report, and that would include...
Take three months and you got a quarterly basis.
Okay, but that would include this budget? And that's all we're asking, that's all you're asking? Okay. But that, that's being provided?
Monthly.
Monthly, and with the new software, very small.
Well, the March financial report would be a quarterly report, because it would be the first three months of the year, so, yes, it was kind of automatic. It's not, yeah, okay.
Mr. Mitch.
So, for those of us that are pondering what the heck's going on here, what is the difference in the report in March that has the year to date, which would be the quarter, that the Finance Director does, and what is the report that is required by law from the city clerk? What is the difference?
Ask him.
Well, I, I ask, yes.
I don't know what the quarterly report is that the clerk is required to do.
Okay.
We prepare a report like this every month, and it's like Ms. Zeller said, the one at the end of the quarter would have the, actually, the one like it's six months would be for six months, for the two quarters of September and so forth. And like I said, I don't believe those typically have been discussed here. There may be items that have been discussed, but the report itself has not been discussed here. Am I, am I correct there, Diane, Mayor?
I don't think we've discussed them monthly. Everybody has a copy of them, but unless it's a specific item that comes up that you haven't been asked about before it comes to the table.
We prepare this every month, and I printed it. I can print it double-sided, save paper, if somebody wants us to do that, it's a little easier to read.
Larger print.
I'm sorry. Does it come in a PDF file that you could send us that'd save a tree?
You have to have these in your books.
I don't know, but I've got, I've, I've got, until we get that done, I have a, I have a worksheet, an Excel worksheet, that I can transfer these to and give you an abbreviated version.
Do you do that already? Because I wouldn't want you to do anything extra just for me to look at it.
I've got it prepared, I just haven't tweaked it in a place or two and changed some of the format a little bit, and I have not done it yet.
Okay. Follow-up to that. Madam Clerk, what is, what is the report that you've been required, you mentioned that you're required to do, and why, what is different than what...
It's more extensive. It has payroll, accounts payable, fixed assets, bank reconciliations.
CDs, loans.
And the information is available downstairs, and people do come in periodically, and perhaps they'll want to look at a certain section of the payables. And so it, it is all available. It, you're right, it's very rarely discussed at the table, but different council people have interest in different areas, and they're able to come and dive more deeply into what area they're interested in.
So if it's available, does that satisfy your requirement that you require?
It just needs to be provided.
Okay, so between the two of you, then we have the information we need.
Yes, and it really does take some time to read it, which is a bit of a hitch for some folks, but all the, all the information is there.
Okay.
And, yes, the reports can be made smaller, but they will be less comprehensive as a natural result, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so what's the decision?
Okay, I make a motion that we ask the city attorney to check into the legalities of not having a quarterly report, and continue on as was the previous practice of going with monthly budget reports that lets us know where we are.
We can't do that kind of way, I mean...
State law.
She has a salary by state law.
Check into the state law, is what I'm saying.
If she wants, if, if you want to get a monthly report from the Finance Department, Finance Director provide it like he's been doing, or in whatever form you guys agree on. If she, she's a salary elected official, if she feels it necessary, that she prepare whatever she prepares, there's not really a reason to tell her not to do whatever she's doing.
I would like to know the legality of having a quarterly report. What that all ensues.
But it's state law.
That's what I want checked, in regards to state law, saying what? Because I checked four counties around us. Nobody does a quarterly report.
Maybe they do and don't know about it. I mean, she does it, she doesn't make copies from all of us.
That's why I want this looked into.
Mr. McCall.
It is, I recall from being on here before, that it is state law, and that she's researching that right now, and to, to verify that. The previous clerk, when I was on here, did not ever, didn't ever do it. Ever.
Four, four counties don't.
Well, I mean, it's just because, you know, that's maybe because it's provided by this person, and, and that covers it. I don't know.
That's what I want him to look into, to see if our monthly reports are satisfactory, sufficient, whatever.
Well, whether they are or not, she is required to do that, and that's why she was, was elected. So that would be...
That's what I want to know.
Okay.
Well, monthly report would not be sufficient for many people. They want a quarterly report, it's much more detailed. I mean, citizens have the right to look at that and see, you know, the check register, what, when, how many accounts payable, so forth. I don't want to bother with that, I don't want to read it, I don't care about, and the monthly report is, that the Finance Director gives me is fine with me, but there are people in this town that certainly want to know what more information than what you get on here, and that's what she does quarterly.
Is, is there a motion on the table, or...
That's what we're going to have to wade through here, Mr. Mitch.
I'm all for allowing the Director of Finance and the city clerk to do their jobs as they feel they're defined, and for us to not be over meddling in their business.
I want to wait for the decision.
Okay, is there... You made the motion.
I made a motion to have...
You did.
To have the city attorney look into and give an explanation of what is needed, and how, and if.
Okay, has there been a second?
No.
No second? Is there a second? Okay, without a second, it fails.
Okay.
Okay. So, back to the original, she'll do her quarterly, and Lonnie will do the monthly. Is that, is that the way the council perceived it, as it is right now?
The original motion was to have monthly budget reports as opposed to quarterly.
Okay, we have to have the quarterly, so, by state law, is what...
Okay, now, by state law, does that quarterly mean that we are informed that the quarterly is ready? Or is presented to us?
That's something Mr. Weaver would have to research.
That's probably why I asked him to look into it.
Yeah. I can't answer that question.
The law reads that the report is to be provided. When the information becomes available at the next meeting, that report is provided. It may not be two weeks after the end of a quarter, it may be five weeks after the end of a quarter, but as soon as all the data is available, it is brought to this table.
Okay, so within, probably by the end of one month, past the quarter, okay, so March, April, by the end of April, first meeting of May at the most, we would have our first quarterly report.
Not necessarily. Please explain how the process works in your office.
Well, the clerk has given me a list of things that she wants for the report, a list of all the bank accounts that have been reconciled, and that, a list of all the CDs, their maturity dates, the rate of interest that's being paid on them, the complete list of payroll, and we provide that, we provide the accounts payable, of course, we don't have accounts receivable, per se, and, but a complete list of all checks that have been written for that quarter. And I've got the list in my office, as of right now, well, all of the indebtedness of the city, both the bonds, and of course, we owe some at the banks, on the ambulances, and this facility, and so that's kept in a notebook in my office, and that's made available. There's only one copy of that, but it's made available. I can't remember if there's other...
I think there might be one other item, like fixed assets once a year.
Well, fixed assets, of course, yes. But all in all, it's a, you know, it's a fairly detailed, well, it is very detailed, of the information that I print and give to her, because the way our accounting system works, it has to come from the finance department. The clerk is not into the server on that information.
Well, the new software, will it leave any of this for you?
Uh, probably, yes, it will.
Okay, so if the end of the quarter is March 31st, and you take all accounts, plus and minus, on March 31st, we should be able to have it by the first meeting in May, that's six weeks.
Yes.
Okay. And every quarter, they're after...
Now, let me, let me make a couple of clarifications, okay? When I first came, and after a short period of time on rearranging some things, it took longer for me to get that information for her than it does now. Technically, I could have gotten, but I was working on revision of the budget, technically, I could have gotten that information for her by this meeting, and I will have it by next meeting.
That's for the, that's for the last quarter.
That's for the last quarter.
Yeah, so we're going to, you're going to know exactly what it's going to be, you'll see what it is here, in just a few weeks, what it is she does, and what it looks like, and then if you're, you know, if you want to do something else about it, then why, then you can, but...
We did, we did do some revision of the system, and so we were behind there for a period of time, but now we got all that resolved, and so we're out today.
Mr. Mr.
Are we still on number four, adoption of procedures?
Yes.
Or have we, we really are on there?
We're still there. Trying to clean up the ragged end to this thing.
Is it possible to allow our esteemed clerk and our director of finance to get together and do their jobs?
They usually do.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Prokupal?
Was there a motion on the table?
Didn't get a second.
I don't think it ever got a second.
So everything's died on that, okay?
No, 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 not everything has died, just the end of it. Everything else has been voted on.
Neither of Ms. Snyder's motions got a second.
I only did one motion, and that was to ask him to look into the legal part, the rest has been discussion.
Madam, you made two motions, neither of which got a second.
What was the second motion?
The first was to discuss having a monthly budget report as opposed to quarterly. The second was a motion to have the city attorney look into...
Okay, the first one, I didn't realize was making it as a motion, as opposed to discussion.
Okay. Anything else? Ms. Snyder?
Can we set a rule or guideline or something in regards to when we have outsiders present at the meeting for something on the agenda, whether it's a towns person or a department head, that when they're way down under stuff, we move them up like we did tonight? Make this a general procedure? I mean, I've watched our people sit here all the way to the end and then get canceled. So can we, anytime there's an outsider on a particular thing, can we move them up?
If you want to, yeah. You only have to vote on that one, you can just do it.
Okay. And...
Just like we did tonight.
I would like to ask Tim, please, anytime we're screwing up legally, feel free to jump in and vocalize.
He's good about that.
Please be better, louder.
Mr. Mr.
No, I think I'm finished with the topic.
Okay, anything else on number four? If not, we'll move on to number five. Okay. Did we leave anything out as far as the vote, all encompassing the procedures? Since we voted on each one separately, we voted on Robert's Rules and the...
I think you're fine. You could set particular rules about when a resolution has to be voice voted, and when it has to be...
It brings us, brings us to number five, the selection of Mayor Pro Tim.
Move to discuss.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, my understanding of the Pro Tim issue is that the council has the right to appoint a Mayor Pro Tim to head the meeting in the absence of the mayor or the chair. And then, on the other hand, I have the authority to select a Mayor Pro Tim outside the council to take care of check issues and other issues in my absence. So, that, your job here today is, if you want to select your mayor, I mean, your Pro Tim now for selecting, during the meetings, you can, or you can do it per meeting. Yes, Mr. Prokupal?
Can that person, that Mayor Pro Tim, serve both capacities?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
All right.
I'd have to research it, but can...
You could make, I believe you can make your choice as to who you're going to have, and then if they want to follow and elect that same person, they can. But they can't impose their will on your duties outside of the council.
Yes, Mr. Mr.
The last council, was that a combined, or was that a separate?
Separate.
It was separate. There was somebody different that signed checks when you were...
Mr. Barry was the previous Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes.
And in his absence, because there was times he wasn't at the meetings. Luckily, it never became a Pro Tim issue when he wasn't at the meetings, because I was usually here to cover. But council needs to consider somebody that's going to be here most of the time at most of the meetings, like, I was going to appoint Mr. DeVito, the Pro Tim, since he has the experience of what's going on for my absence in general.
At the meeting, I asked him specifically, when we were just, before I was a council person, so it's not ex parte, to be sure, if he had an interest in that, and he told me absolutely not, so I...
Okay.
And he, because he asked me at the time that he wasn't going to be here, and he really wanted to let me know that he expressed an interest in being on the CAPC, so then that led to that. So I guess I'm a little surprised with that, because I think that would be, you know, a great thing.
It was based strictly on experience, so it would be.
I agree with you, and I thought it would have been great, but he, boy, he was, he came back and said he has a business to operate.
By me to him, so that was only speculation on my part. Mr. McClung?
Sorry.
Well, I was going to recommend changing the video for that position.
I think we cleared that one up.
Well, he gets for not being here.
Yeah, I take. Absentee.[1763.12]